Table, the old business piece of public program.
I second.
All those in favor? On to new business, we have the summer rec program report.
Yes, and we have Jared here with us just to let us know how summer rec went this year.
Yeah, whatever you get to do in the room, it turns into a PowerPoint. So, here's our PowerPoint on how summer rec went. Whenever we do anything for like the first time, we always have a little bump. But honestly, this year, I think it went really great for our first run of ever trying to run a summer rec program in a new school with almost all new counselors. I think I was the only one that came back from last year. So, we had all new staff, been a ton of new kids, and we had a lot of fun. So, we had two hundred and nineteen kids sign up for summer rec this year, which I believe is more than we've ever had. I don't think every kid showed up every day, but we had a very full cafeteria the first week. This is how they broke down into the age groups. We had a ton of that elementary school age kids. And everyone was managed by sixteen counselors and our two or three junior counselors, depending on who was there that day. Our junior counselors were honestly like amazing this year. We had a really, really good two or three that would show up and just nail it. Our daily activities, we would split the kids up. So, all of our groups were split into those three age groups. And then they would each get assigned like a space for about an hour. So, in the morning, we would say like, alright, five to nine, you're in the gym. Little ones, you're going to the field. Older ones, you're going to the playground. And they would disperse. And anyone is welcome to stay in the cafeteria and continue to do arts and crafts, or play with Legos, or hang out with their friends. And these were all the things that they could do at each individual place.
And they had a unique art or craft every day that every kid could engage with. And any of them chose to do it at least once in the day.
So, and then our cafeteria was pretty perfect. It was air conditioned, which was lovely. So, if the kids got too hot, we would bring them all in, especially in the afternoon. And we'd show a movie. So, we joked that we'd have dinner at a movie, where we'd all be eating lunch at the tables and watching whatever movie that we voted on for that day. And then if they wanted to, they could still go out and go to the gym, and come back and get some water, and go back out, migrate around. But they really had a great time. And whenever it was raining, we would do the same thing. It was like a really awesome space to just all come together and do whatever needed to be done. And all the kids could, knew where the spaces were. And they really didn't get into anything they weren't supposed to. And our janitors actually commended us on how well we kept the space. We had them come in constantly and be like, is this okay? And they're like, yeah, whatever, we're fine. So, we had, um, the janitors come in that last day. And like, we put all the tables away, we made sure the floor was mopped, the stage was all cleared, and they were like, oh, you did this?
They were very good partners, and they made sure that we had all the cleaning supplies that we needed, and that we were well taken care of, so that we could do the job that we need to do.
Look at them all. So, every day, they had a specialized arts and crafts put together by Kim Cody. So, they would make little trinkets all summer long. They built all kinds of stuff with the Legos. We had water games. We had a giant parachute. We played a lot of duck, duck, splash. And over here, on those two pictures with the cardboard boxes, we bought a, um, it's called a make-do kit. And you can cut and screw together cardboard boxes. So, no cardboard box ever went to the trash before being mutilated by the children. They had so much fun with that. And they built some like really funny stuff that they just thought was awesome. And we really just let them fly with that. But it was always picked up and painted and all kinds of stuff.
And also, we really can commend our counselors. We had a really good crew this year that turned out and did a great job. We had a lot of kids that it was their first, um, job in high school. And they rose to the challenges that came up. And we were really involved with the kids. They were really into it. Yeah, I hope, most of them felt like they had a good time, too.
Yeah, I think a lot of them said they wanted to come back next year. Like, the juniors that weren't leaving for college were like, we're coming back. And then this was our schedule. We had a field trip every other day. So, every Tuesday and Thursday, we would go somewhere. So, like, an age group or two would go to wherever and leave one age group behind, so that there could do like a specialized activity back at rec. So, when the older kids stayed back, they could play like a game that maybe they weren't allowed to play on a regular day because it was too hectic. But with, I'll just focus on that game, it could run a lot better. So, we went to Mount Piska, the movies. We went to Dummer's in Mount Blue, bowling, Dr. Drew and Funzy. Went to Dew Haven. And then, we actually had a group, the eleven pluses got really upset that they didn't get to go to Funzy. So, they voted and decided that they wanted to change the schedule so that they could go to Funzy instead of Dew. And we let them do that. And that worked out just fine. They were all very happy. So, yeah, and then our last day was the talent show, which also went really good. We actually, like, at the end, they all did the cha-cha slide. And we all forgot to vote on who the winner was. So, they were just all winners, and they really didn't care. Next year, we want to do a couple of things different. We're gonna have lunch counts on the field trip form itself, so they'll just check it off. That was more for me to remember. Parents will turn in the slip the day before instead of the morning of, so we can have a better idea who's going in for lunch counts. We'll always pack a lunch for rec, so we don't have to come back. Not like run to eat lunch and then leave. That kind of got a little close a couple times. And then most likely, we'll go to Mount Blue State Park twice, or plan a hike like one day a week, and then go somewhere like the movies or Dr. Drew another day. So, that it's a little bit cheaper for parents, because they did have to spend more money on days where we went to like the movies or bowling, or, um, the trampoline park was like twenty bucks per kid. So, if we kind of broke that up, it would be a lot cheaper for parents. And then the Mount Piska hikes for the little kids would go pretty okay. Jared was the one who took the kids to Mount Piska, and he loved it.
We had a great time. We had, um, the eleven plus group went to Mount Piska. So, we had not hiked much before, and for them, it was quite a trek, which is fun because it's so local. So, they went to see something new. And they get to climb the tower. Had a couple of kids that were very petrified of heights, but thanks to the encouragement of their siblings, they made it up, and they were very pleased that they did.
Yeah, there they are, look at them all. So, we had a couple of pictures from when we went to, um, uh, Splashtown, Splashtown, bowling, of course. And when we went to Dr. Drew, and they were all brave and touched the snake. And that picture was not taken by me. I was, I was in the trampoline part. I wasn't doing that. Yeah, the janitors really said that we did a good job. I actually, I got an email from Ken Biding at the beginning of school. That was like, it was one sentence, it was just, thank you for doing a great job with summer rec and cleaning up after yourselves. I was like, oh, that's so much for Ken. But we really worked hard to be able to switch out the tables, make sure we had all the cleaning supplies. We washed out the trash cans, they got milk in them. We made sure there was no food or, um, drinks or anything going into the gym. Like, we were quite sticklers about making sure that the building stayed the way that we found it. And our cleaning day, we always clean on Fridays. It's kind of a tradition. And so, what we do is we take the kids outside, and we feed unlimited popcorn and popsicles out of a little air popper. And they think that that is the best thing ever. And that gives us time to kind of have them all chill and do sidewalk chop before a parent pick up on the half day. And about half the counselors go back in, and they deep clean the entire like areas that we've been in. So, they really sweep the gym. They pick all the tables up and mop all the floor, and then put all the tables back. They put away the card games and make sure everything's back where it should be. And they were awesome this year, just being like, oh, okay, the kids are fine. I'm gonna go in and offer to mop. And if someone mopped for too long, they were good about switching. So, we only had two mops. But, yeah, no, we did a great job this year, I think, with the counselors, just being really gung ho to get everything up and cleaned and away and organized. And then Jared had to clean up the graffiti. Looking at him, he did such a good job. And then t-shirts. My favorite part was like, was doing the t-shirts. So, this year, we did like a really simple design. I liked it. I liked that it was red. It was really easy to pick them out from far away. I knew it was a rec kid if they were wearing a red shirt. So, um, and I still see a lot of kids wearing them at school. So, I think this is like a really quintessential part of rec, where we always get the shirts, and they feel like, I'm part of a club now. I have the rec shirt, so.
So, you, you guys, or not you, but the school provided breakfast and lunch for the kids every day as well?
Yep.
And I, I kind of asked you this before, Emma, and I know you don't have an answer. It's just if you're.
I looked back. I found some pictures on my phone. We typically fed between forty and sixty-five kids per day, um, at least a lunch. Breakfast count was kind of harder to get because that was all the lunch ladies. They had the little, we had like a tick sheet. We'd tick off who gets a lunch. So, yeah, usually sixty-five kids were the average, getting a lunch every day.
And how many of those wouldn't have had a lunch if they hadn't been at summer rec?
Yeah.
Is the point I was trying to make, so. It's a great program all around.
Yeah, and they get to go outside and do things that they wouldn't necessarily get to do at schools. Like, like, they get to run around and just play all day, and go into the woods, and just kind of be chill and explore nature a little bit more than they could at school.
I will say there, many of the nine and up were less than thrilled to hear me come up behind them and say, put the phone away. And if you have to be told again, they will end up in the office. Very, very fortunately, I didn't have to take many phones over the summer. But it, it's interesting, um, the amount of time that they'll spend on those.
Yeah, yeah, if they weren't at our program, they would have been probably nonstop on those. But, yeah.
You excited for next year?
That's it? I figured you guys would have all kinds of questions.
She was very thorough. And there were no body bags, so it's all good.
Everyone came back from every field trip?
We only had two, what I would consider, uh, moderate injuries. We had one young one who, ah, they caught a basketball wrong with their pinky and broke their pinky. And we had a young man, um, who smashed his head, something like one of the last days.
Caught, caught a football, turned old.
And called for, um, blood. We really had a good, final, tops of scrapes, but nothing, nothing serious, which, thank goodness. We did, I will say, one of the, one of the nice things of our staff is, after the first couple of weeks, we had three different staff members that did decide to pursue their first date. So, we ended up with more people first date certified, which is, in my opinion, always good.
And you did have, was it five or six attendants that worked at the school with you guys?
Yes.
That were counselors?
So, we tried to go, um, two, two high school students for every adult that we hired. And adults not there, because we have, we had some, I suppose, we're seniors. They're adults, I don't want to undersell that. But we tried to make sure that we had a good mix of people that had some working experience, and people who was gonna be there first, first time. I was very happy with our staff.
What do you think the kids, what was their favorite trip?
Uh, to Splashtown.
Yeah.
If we didn't go, they would riot. You would hear about it.
Well, anything to get them to come in and participate, whatever it takes.
Well, outside the big one, I would say that Funzy and the Dr. Drew.
Oh, Funzy, yeah.
I heard about the Dr. Drew and the animals for the weeks follow, we follow it solidly. Like, they were very excited about that one. And they love that great food.
And, uh, and the Mount Blue, the reason we want to go to Mount Blue twice is because it's such a great place for the kids to go. Like, there was like ten kids over in the corner, like, getting clams out of the mud, just skipping them across the pond, having like the best time of their life, just over there digging up clams. You go, you're not hitting anybody, you're fine. So, and they have a really nice, um, like, playset as well. So, the kids can go from either like, the, they have the big lean-to. So, they have the lean-to, the bathrooms, the big playground, and then the lake. So, it's really like an awesome spot for us to go for like two dollars a kid. So, it really was like the ultimate trip. It was kind of not the greatest day when we went. It was a little overclass and like sixty, but they still went in the water. So, they were happy.
Did you have any kids this year that have never been to the beach before?
I, we might have had a couple little ones that might not have been to specific places. I know a lot of the kids had never been to Mount, a lot of the counselors had never been to Mount Blue State Park. So, that was, it's always fun taking them to new places. A lot of the kids had never seen a lot of the animals at, um, Dew when we went. They got to like hand feed the goats, and they go through and see the camels and the tigers and all those kind of fun animals, and the monkeys. Oh, they love watching the little monkeys go back and forth, and they always correct them. No, it's a marmoset. They get really fun with it, but.
How did you keep track of a hundred children at Fun Town?
So, each, so each counselor, we had a system. Each counselor had six kids that we like hand placed as a group of friends that would be with a counselor. And they only had about six or seven, or like some of the older kids, there was a group of eight, but they stuck with one counselor. And that counselor was to make sure that they had lunch. They weren't eating a ton of sugar, and they were gonna throw up. Those were like the three big things. But, so like, if they, like, half the kids wanted to go on a ride, and half the kids didn't, half the kids would go on the ride, and the rest of the group would stay at the exit, wait for them to get off, and then just go. So, it was a lot of patience building, but you just move as a herd through Fun Town, Splashtown, and make sure that you keep doing a constant headcount.
Constant headcount. We had, um, some really great parent and, um, community volunteers that came to help out. And in Y group specifically, we had, I was long, uh, I was a gym, gym teacher. And it was very nice to have someone else.
Well, she went to a bathing zoo, so she got stuck with Jared.
Hey. I was happy to have. A lot, we had a parent, Dan LaMonte, several parents and grandparents that were happy to go there with their kids, and were happy to join the group and kind of help out.
You also put the tattoos on them, too.
Yes, I, I put fake tattoos on every child. Because sometimes, especially at Splashtown, when they take their rec shirt off, I have no, like, you're a different child. So, so I put a temporary tattoo on each kid, so that I could think of when they run by, I'm like, hey, you're a thief. So, that worked really well. But, yeah, we got them all back. They all ate, they all ate lunch. That's usually the big thing, is they're having too much fun to eat. You gotta like corral them for a half hour, and they'll go, okay, go. So, they all went to the candy store. Everyone had a good time. That's the big thing at Fun Town, Splashtown. They gotta go on the scary ride, they gotta go to the candy store.
Is there a Facebook page or anything like that associated with this?
You want one?
Well, I'm, I'm just wondering. I know a lot of places, they put pictures up, and of course, you have to have the parents sign.
Yeah. That's a big, yeah, we discussed it.
I'm the person at the primaries, and I, I am very, very hesitant with that, because I just, I don't want to infringe on the parents' rights. And I don't want to put parents in that position. I know at school, we have, we have to have that paperwork. And if we were going to do something like that, I would, I would feel that we would be parents to sign off to make sure that they were okay with it. And I would hate to have someone, um, upset that their kid was online, and they, they weren't aware.
I, I, most of the pictures from this were like every picture I'd taken, because I specifically try not to take a lot of pictures of random people's kids, just because it's kind of on the edge of being weird.
Yeah.
But, yeah, so a lot of those pictures, they were like one kid, was because it was, I got it from a parent who volunteered, who took pictures of their own kid that sent it to me to use in this PowerPoint, so.
And that's a great way for the, your permission to send, is when they send it.
Right.
You don't have to worry.
I know, I know a lot of the camps and stuff, they just, with your registration, they give you one of them papers, and, of course, then you have to keep track of who's in what picture and stuff.
Yup.
Yeah.
Kids do love going online and checking out, oh, she has a picture of me on here.
Right, absolutely.
Maybe thoughts for next year to think about. Sounds like you guys had an awesome time, did a great job, considering the, that we were struggling to get it funded, and, you know, this might have not happened, you know, not that long ago, so.
The kids were very glad that it happened.
Yes.
We had, you know, I still have a lot of kids who are very excited about rec when they come talk to me in the morning. They had a great time.
Yeah, the kids no longer refer to me as Mr. Papo. It's Ms. Emma, because I was Ms. Emma at rec. Mr. Papo's out the window.
So, how did the number of kids compare to previous years? This was definitely a lot higher?
Then, we started out, so how rec works is like typically the first two weeks are the busiest, and then people start to go on vacation, or friends stay over at other people's houses. And so, our numbers kind of dwindle towards the end. But I think last year, it was pretty comparable to this year, with like our consistent numbers. I'd have to ask Sally if, like, what our constant numbers were. But we did technically take a daily, um, like, attendance sheet. They were just paper and were cleaned away.
And it was more to make sure we could track who was there, if there was, for someone to confirm that they are here, and if anything were to go wrong. So, that was the other part, is when, when we collected everything we needed, I made sure I made a database that had everybody's allergies and all the things that a counselor would need, so that if someone goes wrong with little Tim, then we can make sure that we can get a hold of emergency contact right away, that they know if there's any medical event that happened. And then if there's anything that we need to be aware of, whether it's, um, a food allergy or environmental allergy, just anything that we can make sure our counselor is new to keep the kid safe, get them home every day.
How did the, so how did the talent show work? Did they have to practice, or?
Yeah, they had to practice for two weeks. They had, they were bugging us to practice, because the ones that remembered it from the year before, they're like, when does the talent show start? I'm like, it's the second day. So, um, about two weeks before we actually do the talent show, we'd start talent show practice, which would be run by a counselor who would like vet the song before we would play it, and make sure that everything was good and cultured. And, yeah. But for the most part, the kids like picked really funny songs. And sometimes, they need a little bit of help, where they're like, okay, well, me and Sarah want to do this, like, what do we do? And so, they need a little bit of help. But like, we had a couple of kids that came up to me, and they're like, we want to do a dance, but we don't know what to do. But we want to do it like wearing our crocs on our knees. And I was like, well, do the YMCA. And they were like, oh. And so, we had like the croc kids do the YMCA in the front of the stage, just having the time of their life. So, they just needed like that little push. But they usually come up with really funny ideas, or are just very serious. Like, we have a very serious Star Spangled Banner this year with sung by, she's six, little six-year-old. She had a great time singing the Star Spangled Banner.
I guess, I mean, the only other thing I was wondering, do you do any, uh, like, group building, like trying to get kids into meet different people? Because, you know, even as, even as adults, we tend to flock to the same people we know all the time.
Yeah, they had, I mean, they pretty much mixed in. Like, we had like the Gaga ball pit people and the dodgeball people, and then like the sit and chat people. But for the most part, there wasn't really any bullying per se. There was like, not really like a segregated, like, well, he's a boy, so he's over there. It was very mixed. So, it didn't really like need any forcing. Like, they just kind of milled around and had different friends and would do different things. So.
And I think a big part of that is, um, you never knew who was gonna be there any given day, because someone might be off at Aunt or Uncle's house, or they might be, they might be on a vacation somewhere, or they might not have come that day. And we had, we had a few different points where there were little illnesses going around in the summer. Nothing serious, but someone might be out for a couple of days because they weren't feeling well. And so, then now, all of a sudden, you get that social restructure, and they did a pretty good job of mixing up.
And if it was raining, everyone did arts and crafts, so. It worked out.
And wanted to be in the gym. Even if it was a hundred degrees, they wanted to be in the gym. They, they loved that gym.
Wow. Really appreciate all the hard work. And sounds like the use in the school worked out really well this year.
This, this space was great.
Yeah.
I will say, I'm very glad that we had a space, um, that they could come back to. Some kids were out. They were out, we would, you know, playing hard in the morning, and having the ability to come in and have a cool lunch, and have that chance to cool their body, yeah, and make sure they had water. It was really nice.
Yeah, how many times did we fill that water pitcher constantly?
Water cooler that we filled, I don't know how many times, but.
We had, we had nice ice water.
The cafeterias were very, very great to us. Janitor's staff were great to us, so. Very happy with the new school.
Well, that, that reflects well on everybody, so we're happy that they're happy with you guys.
So, yes.
Right, so. And you're gonna do it next year?
I hope so. Please let me.
Say it's a lifetime commitment.
Yeah, that's what Sally said. She said, you'll be doing it when you're sixty. I was like, okay.
Alright.
Good. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. To continue with new business, we have the appointment of the CEO, Richard Greenwald.
Yes, so we have a brand-new CEO. He actually started today, just began to get acclimated and start looking through the office and catching up on, uh, the ordinances and stuff. He is a certified code enforcement officer, licensed plumbing inspector, as well as a licensed, uh, certified health officer, so. We're happy he's here. Yeah, and his hours are Tuesday and Wednesday from eight-thirty to five-thirty. And he gets to meet the planning board tomorrow night?
Good. I'd like to, uh, make a motion, we appoint Richard Greenwald to CEO. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Onto the next one is appointment of health officer, who will also be Richard Greenwald.
I move that we approve the appointment of Richard Greenwald as our health officer.
I'll second. All those in favor? Up next, we have a general assistance year update.
I should have said yearly, sorry.
No, that's okay. Yearly update.
In your information, you should have had the old maximums and then the new maximums as well.
Now, are these numbers he handed us from the, from the county? Or how did we come up with these numbers? The state does it?
I think so.
Do you want to answer that, Doris?
We get them from DHHS.
They said okay.
From DHHS?
The, the set, yeah. It's all based off from that. It goes hand in hand with the state. And the state sends us these papers, um, with the new and the old. And it just kind of works with the DHHSs.
Okay.
The numbers look identical.
Now, is this just information?
Well, if you notice on the food, the act, the only thing that's gone up, they literally, the maximums went up by like a dollar.
Yeah, I see that.
Um, yeah, on overall maximums for in the household, it didn't go up too much, but about thirty dollars, I think it is. Twenty-eight dollars.
Yeah.
And then the housing maximums, um, because rates and rents have just increased, just crazy, uh, they've had to increase on the housing maximums. As far as electric, household, personal supplies, that sort of thing, those numbers all stayed the same.
And we're supposed to adopt these?
Yes.
I would make a motion that we adopt and approve the general assistance maximums as presented.
I'll sec.
Go ahead.
I'll second. All those in favor? We have fiscal year 2024 carryover amounts, police, public works, and paving.
Yes, so, um, there was approximately a hundred, get to the right page here. A hundred fifty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars and change left in the police department's, uh, operating budget at the end of fiscal year twenty-four. So, I'm asking to carry over a hundred forty thousand of that into the police department reserve account. There was thirty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars and change left in the public works, uh, operating account and a mass.
Thirty-four?[1758.89]
Yeah, thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and a little bit. And so I'd like to carry twenty-five thousand over that into the public works reserve account. And then the paving account, at the special town meeting we had last August, we carried forward two hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred ninety-four dollars in that paving account, which gave us a beginning balance of three hundred forty-five thousand, two hundred ninety-four dollars. Of that, we've spent a hundred sixty-three thousand, three hundred sixty-one dollars and twenty-three cents, leaving a balance of a hundred eighty-one thousand, nine hundred thirty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents at the end of fiscal year twenty-four. And we would like to carry that over into twenty-five.
What was the amount you want to carry over?
One hundred eighty-one thousand, nine hundred thirty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents.
And that would be for the purposes of paving?
Correct.
And the other reserve accounts would be for equipment and things of that nature?
Yes, yeah, so we don't have to, if we carry it over now, we don't have to raise as much in future years.
So it wouldn't be for whatever, just it'd be for later equipment?
Yep.
What was the carryover for the police department?
Hundred forty.
Yes.
Twenty-five for public works.
I was gonna say, we do have some spring paving work that we do still need to do because we ran out of time. So some of that, the paving, will be spent down this spring coming up.
The one for the police, which is the, what account does it carry over into?
The police department reserve account.
Just a reserve account?
I think it's, it's titled now as cruiser account, but it's, it should just be, they should be generic department reserve accounts, so.
Will that be able to be used for cameras and vests and?
That's the goal.
Major, things of that nature, just not cruisers.
Well, it could be cruisers.
Yeah, it could be, but not just.
Yeah, it's those capital, capital expenditures.
I'd like to make a motion that we carry over a hundred forty thousand dollars into the police reserve account. Are these all separate or?
It's up to you if you want to.
And then twenty-five, yeah, twenty-five K into the public works reserve account, is that a worth going?
Yes.
And then a hundred eighty-one thousand, nine hundred thirty-two, seventy-seven into the paving reserve account.
I'll second.
All those in favor? All right. Joint sewer reserve account request.
Yeah.
So we have four main flow pumps at the treatment plant. They have seals on them and they have seal water supplied to them. For a number of years, the number being about twenty-four years, the seal water supply has come from our plant water system. We had an issue with one of the pumps that we replaced a year or so ago. They highly recommended we change that to plant wa, uh, city water supply, not recirculate the wastewater that we just treated. Uh, the reason for that is there can be some grit in the water supply or some particular matter and it could cause premature seal fail down. And they mentioned that they strongly recommended it because it could void our warranty on the pump that we just put in. Unfortunately, we, because of the upgrade, the contractor, T-Buck, was performing work in that area or other areas where we needed to tap into the city water supply and bring that down. I had talked to Bracket Mechanical and I had mentioned to you at some point in the future where we would be doing this. Well, he called me, no, ten days ago and said, I've had a cancellation of my schedule. I can come do that now. So I talked to Carrie and I talked to Shiloh and explained to them what I wanted to do and that we had mentioned this to you before and I gave him the green light to go ahead and do it. So this work has actually almost been completed. He's still got to come back and insulate the lines and then it will be completed. You want to leave him uninsulated for a while to make sure there were no leaks before he covered them with insulation? Then had to chase leaks, so. I am asking for up to five thousand dollars based on his estimate. He gave me a price not to exceed five thousand dollars. The project has gone well, thinking it will be less than five thousand easily. So if I could get your approval to spend five thousand dollars from the joint reserve account and then I'll go to the J Board next Monday night and ask their permission as well.
Now, what is, what does this pump do again?
It's, it taps into the city water line that goes throughout the building. It was quite a ways. It was up, actually upstairs and this was down in one of the pump rooms, the furthest off pump room, the primary pump room. So they had to tap into it up by where the centrifuges, the de-watering unit, and go through that entire room, go down through the hallway, through the blow room, down through and into the secondary pump room, uh, primary pump room. And they actually installed a washdown hose bib there too. So when we wash down the floors of the pumps after we clean them, we can use city water instead of plant water. Just a little bit more hygienically correct, I guess you would say, using city water as opposed to wastewater. But, so it is up and functioning now, as I said. The work has been done. This is kind of an after the fact and I apologize for that. And along those lines, I don't like to do it this way, but it was in our best interest, I thought, and the town managers agreed, I believe. Yes. So Carrie will throw a bus on this one, good?
Next time.
Okay.
Now, is this twenty-five hundred from J and twenty-five hundred from us or just from the reserve account?
Just from the reserve account that we both fund based on the O and M flow split percentage. And after you decide yea or nay on this, I've got a list of other things so that I don't blindside you with this last minute again because this is not how I like to do things.
So this is pretty much paid for all the plumbing to run the water down to the?
Yep, yep.
Now, will this, this increase of water bill, how does that work?
The seal water is a very low flow lines. It starts out as a one-inch line, goes down to a header into a half-inch line, and then there are four quarter turn lines, quarter inch lines that come off that. The only time it actually activates is if the seal opens. The flush water will flush whatever particle comes into that seal and flush it back out and let the seal seep back up so that it doesn't leak all over the floor.
So it'd be minimal, eh?
Very minimal. Yep, we won't even notice this on our water bill. I am not expecting that anymore.
I'd like to make a motion then that we approve the spending of up to five thousand dollars from the joint reserve account to change the plant water supply line to the four main flow pumps to the city water supply line.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Can I continue on now with, so you're not surprised in the future with what may be coming down the line? For expenditures that'll be coming to the board and requesting out of this account? First of all, it's important to note that this account has a hundred eighty-four thousand dollars in it and it receives approximately seventy thousand dollars in funding annually from either the septic revenue that we get at the plant or the O and M billing that we do. J and Livermore Falls together put two thousand dollars a month into this account based on the flow split percentage. So roughly J puts in eleven hundred and fifty dollars and Livermore Falls puts in eight hundred and fifty dollars a month into this account. And we get in the summertime as much as ten thousand dollars from septic receiving and in the wintertime, some like as little as two thousand dollars a month. But through the course of a year, with the centrifuge running and taking in the septic revenue like we do, it usually gets about seventy thousand dollars a year in funding. So with that being said, we have some work to do at the South Side Pump Station manhole for a precast riser section there. I believe that is going to be, after getting some new pricing today, maybe as little as two thousand dollars or three thousand dollars out of the account for that. We have to do something about the water coming off the roofs of the new primary clarifiers. We had an engineer's estimate and construction look at it, is doing it as part of the project. It was going to cost us around eighty to ninety thousand for roof structure. Working with Bracket Mechanical, we think we can do something totally different. The engineers are looking to see if it's going to avoid the warranty on the roofs itself, so we're waiting on that. But that may be as much as five to ten thousand dollars out of the reserve account for that. Primary clarifiers, the catwalks only go to the middle of the primary clarifiers. Yet we need to wash the entire circle around the outside of the primary clarifiers. It would be good if we could walk to the entire other end. So we're going to extend that catwalk using some of the catwalk sections that we've removed in demolition from the existing treatment plant and also the North J wastewater treatment facility. We have some sections, we'll let Bracket Mechanical put that in and the railings to boot. That is probably going to end up costing us around eight thousand dollars, I'm estimating. We will be getting a tractor as part of the upgrade, hopefully this fall before winter comes. We'll be using that for snow removal. We are not getting the implements through the grant program for the upgrade. So I'd like to buy a snow blower for the back of it. I am not exactly sure which brand or anything. I'll have to do some shopping, but I feel as though I can do that for five or six thousand dollars. And we'll also probably have talked to Bill about this, get a high-capacity snow bucket for the front of it. The bucket that comes on it is made for digging dirt or that sort of thing. I'll get a larger capacity bucket for in the wintertime to move snow with. And probably next summer, we will, once the treatment plant is done, we'll be needing a new lawnmower. And that lawnmower will be split between the collection system and the treatment plant. A fifty-fifty split because we use it mowing at our pump stations and we'll use it mowing at the treatment plant. So that'll be split between the two, but it'll probably take somewhere between twenty-five and, twenty-five hundred and three thousand dollars from the reserve account. So if you add those all up that I just mentioned, it's about a thirty-three thousand dollar total expenditure that I see coming up in the next six to eight months. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. If you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to explain why we need these things or what they'll be used for and why it's best to do it this way.
Lawnmowers are very expensive now.
Yes, yeah.
And the place where the catwalk only goes halfway?
Yep.
How were you getting the rest of it watered?
We're not at this point. We're doing the best we can by holding the hose up as high as we can.
Okay.
It's not doing an adequate job and we found that out now that we've got them. So we will put the catwalk the rest of the way across. There's an I-beam structure that goes all the way across. We just need to put a walkway on top of it. And the reason we don't do that as part of the project is it would be cost prohibitive. So trying to do things as reasonable as we can, yeah.
I guess when it comes to snow removal, what were you doing up until this point before you were looking at a snow blower?
We have, with this upgrade, we've got some new nooks and crannies, larger areas to clean out within the plant. We have, fortunately, last year it didn't snow and also the contractor is responsible for the snow removal during the upgrade. But they will be gone. They'll be through substantial completion probably in October, November of this year. So it'll be up to us to do the snow removal. The area around the Headworks building is going to be a trap, I guess you would say, for snow. A lot of the snow that comes down across the rec field when the wind blows is going to land right in there. When the town comes down through plowing, we're plowing everything to the opposite side of the road. But we're going to have quite an area there in front of the Headworks building to clean out now. We're also going to have a road that goes back to the trickling filters that we've never had before. So that's where we're intending on using the snow blower on the back of the tractor unit. Okay. So, and that can also be used, you know, we'll push back the bankings on the foundry road and that sort of thing is our intent. You know, a lot of snow, if we get a regular snow winter, it's a pain in the butt down there. And when, we've got a lot of snow down there, Bill's got a lot of snow all around town that he's dealing with, so it's not exactly convenient for him to leave the roads in town unattended to go down there and move snow for us. So we're trying to become self-sufficient, a little more so anyway. Is that accurate, Bill?
Yes, very.
And also, while we're talking about highway and sewer, the foundry road, because of the construction schedule this year and building the retaining wall around the trickling filters and secondary clarifiers, the foundry road will not be paved this year. We're planning on paving it in the spring. That'll give the disturbed areas a winter to settle. Even though they compact everything fully when they come up through, there's nothing like a freeze thaw cycle to make sure everything's where it's going to be so we don't pave the road and then end up with a bunch of bumps of frosty use in it. So we're in that by Bill. He approved that and that's, the contract is, it's going to change that schedule to pave in the spring. And we'll pave the foundry road at the same time. Hopefully it'll all tie together, hopefully. Fingers crossed.
Well, thank you for the heads up, Mark.
Yep, thank you for listening.
All right. November fifth, twenty twenty-four, town meeting warrant.
So I gave you a draft, but the town's attorney did have some revisions to that. We can wait and do this when you decide if you really want to move forward with a cruiser because we don't have that information yet. So we can table this till next meeting, which I would suggest, actually.
I want to make a motion that we table the town meeting warrant.
I second.
All those in favor, oh. Oh, that's all right. I didn't know we had a question. All right. MMA voting delegate.
So this is the annual, they do their annual meeting every year at the convention and you can name a delegate to vote on the town's behalf. So that's all this is. So I do plan on going, so.
Can you be a delegate?
Yep, I can. You just need to sign.
I would like to move that we make our town manager our delegate, our voting delegate at the MMA convention.
Sure.
I second that.
All those in favor? Do we need to appoint an alternative too or is that?
No.
Okay.
Were you the delegate last year?
And we're still here, so you must have done okay.
Fabulous job, I understand.
And we'll need a couple of signatures before you, gentlemen, leave.
Yes, ma'am.
Onto fire department billing.
So I've talked to Carrie a little bit about this, talked to Will, I don't know, I'm not so involved with this. Just trying to put some feelers out. In Turner, I set this up with Central Main Cost Recovery out of, I think they're out of Waterville area, a brewer up that way somewhere. My goal is to be able to start billing for these nuisance calls essentially for OUI calls if somebody drives through town, blows their telephone pole and we're sitting out there for four or five hours waiting for CMP to come set up a new pole and that type of stuff. The town, it's coming out of our budget, so it's costing the town money to pay for the fire department to sit out there and block Park Street or whatever because we don't have anybody else to do it. So I'd like to be able to set up this billing ordinance and we have some, I have some ordinances. I have one from Turner that I helped get going, or regoing again when I was chief down there. Carrie has called around to other departments, other towns and collected air ordinances to look at so we can make one that fits this town. But my goal is to be able to start billing for these calls to offset the budget to put into the reserve account for the fire department with you guys' approval. And the way the billing works, if, if we use Central Main Cost Recovery, who I'm familiar with, after every call, we get a run report from dispatch via email. Bobby or myself or whoever was in charge of this would send this call to this billing company and a copy of our run report, which we fill out when we get back to the station of who was on scene, what apparatus is rolled, who is in charge. And then we set up a billing cycle, how much each truck is valued at per hour, how much every person on the department is valued at per hour. And then this company on our behalf would send a bill to Joe Public's insurance company because they were drunk driving in Blue Door telephone pole and we had to sit on South Road for five hours in direct traffic. Or lots of times lately, in the past two months, I bet we've gone to the apartment buildings right here, the same apartment every time for smoke alarms going off in the building. These people that are in this apartment have some issues, obviously. They start cooking dinner, fall asleep, pass out, whatever, whatever the reasoning is. Then they burn the food and the alarms go off, fire department goes, we go to reset the alarm and then go back. There's never been actually a fire there. So I'd like to be able to bill these people for that type of call because every time we get called up for that, they put J on standby, they put Livermore on standby to be able to roll in case there is actually a fire in the building. So they're wasting all these resources because they can't seem to stay awake and cook dinner.
Is there, do you get a return on this from the insurance companies?
Lots of, in Turner, lots of insurance companies actually pay and a lot more towns are doing this now. So the, what happens is this company, Central Main Cost Recovery, I think they take like ten percent. So if the bill's a thousand bucks, they'll take a hundred bucks and then send us a check for nine hundred bucks.
Okay.
So it's all essentially free money for the town. And I'd like to be able to put this into our reserve account.
But it's money that you earned by being on the site.
Correct. And right now, we're not billing for this. Correct, and right now, we're not billing for this.
Yeah.
So.
It's free money, but you burned it.
Correct. So, it'll offset the cost of the budget in the long run. So.
So the town does have a policy on billing for fire services that was approved in two thousand and three. What we've talked about with the officers and I'm just updating this policy to make it current and put some language in there. What we're asking you to decide is how, how you want the billing mechanism to work. Do you wanna use a third party agent, or do you want it to come through the town?
This would be a modification of the policy.
Correct.
So we could do that ourselves.
Correct.
I would suggest a third party to begin, at the very least, to make it easy for ourselves and for the department, if that's okay.
Yes.
That's my suggestion. So that we don't have delayed matters.
There is quite a few of these third party companies out there who will do this for us. I view essential main cost recovery and had great luck with them, guys in Turner. They, like if there was an accident, they would get the police report from whoever, whoever's handling the call, whether it be state police, our police department in Scott County. They'll pay for the police report, take out whatever costs they have entailed right out or before they send us a check. So.
And you've worked with them, so you know what they're up, what they're capable of.
Yeah.
And you're okay with that, so.
Yep.
And it's not uncommon, I mean, you see some towns going as far as billing non-residents for calls.
Correct.
So, yeah.
In Turner, I called it the idiot clause, so. And it, it'll be up to the officer's judgment of whether, whether we're billing or not. If it's an accident, the guy was, drove off the road for road conditions or whatever reason, that's, that's an actual accident. That's not him being drunk and driving through a telephone pole because he can't see straight. Or if there's a medical event, that's an actual accident, so that, that type of stuff will not get billed for it. But if you're an idiot drinking and driving or whatever, then yeah, you're gonna get a bill.
And like you said, a nuisance call.
Correct.
Now, when it comes to the motion, are we looking to just simply say we're gonna seek a third party, or?
You're looking for us to amend?
Amend the policy.
Amend the policy to bring it current, so it meets.
So that it includes a third party?
Yeah, we'll add that language, we'll put definitions in there of what calls um, would receive billing and the process.
And move to recommend.
So, I would move to direct the town to develop a revised uh, fire department billing policy and bring that back to us for review and approval.
Perfect.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Yeah. Three years ago, we'd be fine.
Yeah, two thousand and three, so, so recent.
That's good.
All right, warrant.
It's great, thank you.
Yes. Warrants, abeyments, deeds, quickly.
I move that we approve seven point one payroll warrant, number thirty-six, for twenty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and nineteen cents. And seven point two general fund warrant, thirteen, four thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars and three cents. And number fifteen, one hundred and ten thousand forty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
I just like saying the numbers.
All right, more discussion. Nothing?
Nothing.
Good and simple, nothing. Department reports, who wants to go first, left or right?
Well, I, I would like to thank the public works department for uh, ditching, I guess, on Moose Hill Road. And especially in front of the church, since I'm affiliated with them, what?
Record road.
No, excuse me, uh, record road, phrase is that.
That's what we've been working on, ditching, we're slowly getting there, we got a lot more to do.
They've done a great job.
They really have.
Tomorrow, we will be fully staffed for the first time, uh, most of the summer. We have a gentleman that's staffed tomorrow that has three or four years' experience with another town, so he comes in already trained. Uh, did have his amateur's license, we're gonna find out if that's current. Uh, got a class A license, certified mechanic with, uh, is that up to him?
Uh, Western Washington County Community College.
Yep, so he's got quite a bit of experience, so we're very excited to have him come on board.
Excellent.
So things are starting to look up, and we are getting there solely on the F six hundred, been waiting three weeks for hydraulic lines. Just like everything else, it's taking time for everything to come in, but we are getting there on it. So, that's what we have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Do you have anything for us, Nate?
So, we're still getting new members. Uh, we got Kurt Melcher back on board, he's down on the south end of town, I guess, down where the new station's gonna be. Down off, uh, yeah, one oh six on uh, Lee Road. So Kurt's coming back, I've been hounding him since I took over and finally hounded him enough that he, he capped in. So he's, he's coming back on board, he should be at our next meeting, so. Could be a big asset, because he works right here in town during the day, so if there's anything serious going on, he can, he can leave and jump in the truck and roll to a, to a structural fire or something. He's already trained to pump and all that type of stuff, so he, he'll be a big asset to the town to get back. The antique truck is back home, I don't know if any of you guys saw that. Uh, it was in the J Fire Museum for quite some time, since they redid the station, I guess.
I had heard that, was wondering.
The people in J, I don't know who necessarily was, but I guess they were getting upset, because our truck was in their J museum. So, my father has a tow truck, so he went up and towed it and brought it back to the station, we made some room, so the truck's here in the station now. So, hopefully we'll be able to get that thing running again and running through our break.
Excellent.
So.
Yeah, it'd be kinda cool to see down on the Crowsden if they could get running.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, so Sonny, Sonny's taking that thing back under his wing again. The day we held it there at our last meeting that Wednesday, that's all Sonny did all day. He took the vacuum cleaner to it and vacuumed out the mice nest that was all over it, cleaned it and he's been, he's been all about that truck. So, I think he's more happy about it being there than anybody else is, I think. So, uh. Did you wanna go over these quotes, Kerry, right now?
No.
No, okay.
Nope, sorry, I didn't realize you had them yet.
Yeah, that's, these guys got them.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think that's, we're gonna be doing an education training again the twenty-fifth at Clark's. I called Johnny and he's gonna give us a couple cars that we can cut up and play around with for a few hours next Wednesday, I think it is, the Wednesday after. So, we're getting everybody trained up, Turner's gonna be doing another basic school, so any new member that wants to do the firefighting, interior firefighting can go to that, go to that class in Turner and be certified when they're done. We have one, I think there's just one that's going to Fosse Tech to do firefighter one and two right now. Then when he gets done with that, next year he wants to go to EMT class. We had two people who just graduated from EMT class a month and a half ago. So, we're getting, getting the guys trained, getting them all caught back up and moving forward in the right direction.
Excellent.
You, oops, sir.
Well, what's the compliment now, the, the number of guys or women?
We have approximately twenty-five, twenty-six.
Twenty-five, twenty-six, okay.
It is twenty-five.
Very good, Bobby.
Yep.
You uh, plan to be down to the Apple Pumpkin Festival?
Yes. Yeah, we'll have our coins, we have a bunch of challenge coins that one of our firefighters designed. So we'll have the challenge coins down there as well as hopefully our raffle that we're doing, so.
Were you gonna go down to the, were you bringing the truck down too, Bill?
I was gonna get ahold of Mr. Barry and see if he wanted a truck or if he wanted the bucket loader or something else down there.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I figured if somebody else is gonna be there with a big truck, the kids would probably like seeing the bucket loader or something down there instead, so. Uh, Kerry and I talked about that, was it this morning or yesterday morning, uh, I'll reach out to him and see what he wants down there.
Yeah.
Um, Doris, do you have anything for us?
I do, um, so we've got the annual sewer bills have gone out, um, we've had some pretty good overall feedback from that. A few complaints, but very few, um, pretty much everybody's happy with them. They were coming in, paying them in full, they, they're very happy they're not getting another bill until next summer. Um, so it seems to be overall a very good move on our part.
So it was a little rough at first, but it started to.
Yes.
Always.
Oh, when you're getting your water bill and you see that massive number, yeah, it's kind of, and I guess they just missed all of the information that we put out and the papers put out.
And the, and the little piece of um, feedback that was in every single bill, because we instuffed them, um, people just didn't, a lot of people just didn't see it.
They saw the number and went.
They saw the number and, yes, but overall, they come in, they talk to us, they understand it now, and overall seems to be a very good move on our part.
Good.
Tax bills, um, everybody will receive it this week, um.
This week?
You haven't, what's that?
This week.
This week.
Oh joy.
Yes.
Think I'm gonna leave town.
Well, um, property tax liens have been done, um, we did a hundred and thirty-nine liens. They went to the registry of deeds, so hopefully we can get some feedback and some people coming in to pay those. I have talked to Amanda, who's with Franklin Savings, we're working together on the trunk a treat like we did last year. If anybody wants to come set up in the park and lot, please contact me here at the office, so we can have a good number on um, how many cars are gonna be out here. If you don't wanna come, but you wanna donate candy, that's fine too, we'll take that. And.
I'll be there.
Perfect.
One car.
Perfect, um, if we get a huge response, one thing I'd like to do, um, is think about closing down Water Street. Just to make it safe, um, people can go around, but that way it ensures that all kids going in and out through here are kept safe. Well, not just the kids, everybody, but, um, I have talked with Santa, um, he's all set to do um, our date this year. We just have to narrow it down and um, figure out the best time to do it, but he is definitely on board, Mr. and Mrs. Claus.
Are you still decorating a tree up in the park, or?
Yes. We will definitely be doing that.
All right, well, we need to speak with Abe about closing the road, we need to hit his input on that, right?
That part, I just kinda wanted to throw that out there, so, would have an idea.
Okay. Anything else? Mark, you already unloaded everything, right?
No, I got so much more. I'll just give a quick rundown of the upgrade. We are about ninety-one percent substantially complete with milestone one. Milestone two is about seventy-two percent complete, milestone three is at zero percent right now. Pending the CDS, seven million dollar availability, that's what's holding us off on milestone three. So basically, uh, the fourteen million dollar project where we were at is the one at ninety-one percent. And the additional three million that got us to the seventeen million dollar project is at seventy-two percent. And above that, from the seventeen to twenty-one million, is at zero percent right now. Still trudging forward, going well, trying to minimize as many change orders as we can, because they end up costing us money, but if they're necessary, then we'll go forward with them.
You said how much percent?
Seventy-two, milestone two. Let me make a bigger print for you, Doris.
Yeah.
So, any questions on the upgrade?
I uh, no.
Welcome anybody down there anytime to show them around and show them what we've done.
What are good hours for something like that, to be able to come down?
Um, if someone wants to meet in the evening, that's fine, I can make that work. Everybody works during the day, I know, so if anybody wants to have a tour of the facility, the chief shaking his head, you've got to, because we've got a new fire alarm system down there, chief.
I was just about to ask, when can we?
Yep.
At least get the officers for initially through.
Yep, once they get the construction stuff cleaned up, hopefully this fall, or maybe this winter, be a good time.
Yep.
Indoor activities, you can see all the different rooms and ways to get around.
We can take a Wednesday night, maybe?
What's that?
With, Wednesday night or something like that, we can come down and you can.
Yes, yep.
That way, we know where stuff is.
You can either just call or text me or whatever.
Yep, it's probably gonna be another couple of months before they get all their stuff cleaned up and.
Just to plan ahead, just so that we know where things are, should anything.
Yep.
You know, it's not like, okay, this is all new, it's a surprise, that way we.
We actually have a fire alarm system that works now, we're just waiting for the fiber optic stuff to get hooked up down there. And then we'll, we'll be calling out to dispatch, so we'll coordinate that through you folks.
Cool.
When that time comes.
And just wear shoes that you don't care about.
It was muddy that day.
It was, yeah, it's not like that, Bruce, it was under construction.
Okay.
He's very critical. Yeah, it wasn't what you thought we were stepping in down there, it was mud.
Oh, it was mud. Up to your knee.
Is that all, Mark?
Yep.
All right. Town managers report?
So, to touch on what the, the officers said from the fire department, we have been talking about um, some of their urgent needs over there for capital projects. Um, one of them is the cascade system, the other one is the fit test machine, and I apologize, I didn't realize you had that third quote, Nixon, or I would've, I would've made that an agenda item, so.
We brought everything.
Okay, perfect.
We, we got for both cascade and test and all our information, so.
Okay, super, I'll talk to you guys after, but um, what I would like to do is to use the remaining ARPA funds and um, so they can make that purchase this year with that, there's sixty-seven thousand dollars in change left in the ARPA, of the ARPA money that hasn't been spent. And I'd like to spend that before the end of the year, so we can get all that reporting done and out of the way. Um, and it is a critical need, they can't get parts for the cascade system or their fit test machine anymore, and they have to have both of those, so. So I will come back to you, probably next meeting, with a recommendation of uh, which, which unit and how much, so. And the other thing, uh, you guys are still doing your haunted house this year as well?
Yes.
Okay, I, I thought I had heard that, but yeah, so, I just wanted to put that out there for the public as well. Um, I received words Monday from Plymouth Engineering that they have the survey contours at the site down there. They have that in a digital file and they're working on the septic plan. I still haven't had a chance to get together with the, the building committee, just to make sure that the, everything's laid out the way that they want it, but I, I do need to do that. And I know you're on that committee as well, Nixon, correct? You were once upon a time, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, you are now.
Thank you for volunteering.
We'll be glad to appoint you.
I think it was Jeff Bryant, you and um.
Jason Foley, myself.
Yeah, and me, yeah.
That sounds good.
So the uh, the disposition policy came back from legal, um, I sent that off to them for review. So it complies with the, the new law that says we have to use a, a broker if it's a realist, a tax, real property tax foreclosure. We have to list it with a broker for a year, so there are some language changes in there, so. I did give you copies of that in your box tonight, but I just got that back today, so, I'd love to talk about that next time as well. And um, speaking of fiber, uh, down at the treatment plant, we actually are getting fiber internet and new V O I P phones, uh, townwide. They are going to be installed no later than October sixteen, and that's going to reduce our internet and phone bill significantly, because it will be one bill. And the, I don't remember the exact dollar amount, but it's about thirteen hundred dollars a month versus the three we're paying now. Or almost three, it depends on the, the phone usage, so. We pay Spectrum, we pay Consolidated, and we pay V C N currently. So it, and we're getting uh, fiber everywhere, except for the transfer station. So it, uh, and we're getting, uh, fiber everywhere, except for the transfer station, but it's not out there yet, but, uh, everybody will be connected and will be able to transfer calls building to building, so. Which will be nice.
Savings savings and more money.
It is, it's significant.
That's the recurring savings for, roughly.
I signed a five-year contract.
Yeah, I mean, but.
Seventeen hundred bucks a month.
It's almost a clean.
So we, we do have to buy some hardware upgrades, uh, just to handle the fiber, because some of our equipment is old and that's a thirty-six hundred dollar and change expenditure, but it'll be.
Two months and pay for itself almost.
Yeah, we'll have to do the same thing down there, upgrade some equipment that we didn't plan on, we'll have to purchase.
Yeah.
Overall savings.
Yeah, yeah, so it's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna cut our, our phone and internet bill in half, so, more than in half, so. Which is nice, so, that's it.
I like anything that's sticking with the spectrum.
Is that a quote?
And then just to reiterate again, the Apple Pumpkin Festival is next weekend from ten to three. Everybody come out.
Do we have any public comment?
Got a question, well.
Yes, ma'am.
You guys asked for a update to the property maintenance ordinance, and we just got it back from legal. We're gonna be voting on it tomorrow night as the planning board to accept the changes from legal. I didn't know how soon you guys wanted to get it, to try to get it on this upcoming warrant. Or do you wanna wait and get, put it together with the animal ordinance that we had that had to go out to the state first? I think we were talking about April for that. So I didn't know what you got, how urgent you wanna make it, but, uh. What's that timeframe, Kerry, to get it on the warrant?
Well, if we're gonna do a, a local ballot, we have to approve it at the meeting on the first. Uh, the town warrant, we have to approve that on the first, because we have to have the thirty days. Absentee ballots have to be available thirty days prior to the vote, so.
So we have to approve it by next meeting?
Correct.
I think they'll be pushing it.
Well, you can have the public hearing ten days prior to the vote, so.
And it's all back from legal in its final form?
Yeah.
So it wouldn't be that big of a stretch to, I mean, do we wanna more time to review it, or?
It's up to you.
I'm, I'm fine with putting it on, I mean. It's, we're gonna have a larger turnout for voting, so.
Right. Okay. Yeah, can we cycle it in and get it on the, the ballot then, do you think?
Yeah, well, yeah, 'cause you tabled the warrant anyways, so.
Let's go for that.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Why Dally?
Right?
Or Dilly?
We have no executive session, no more public comment?
I move that we adjourn.
I second that.
All those in favor?